Okay, let's call the committee, the whole meeting to order at five, 5:09. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Madden.
Here.
Alderperson Kubaki.
Here.
Alderperson Engelhardt.
Here.
Alderperson Capusta.
Here.
Alderperson Terrence.
Here.
Alderperson Hamel.
Here.
Alderperson Wolf.
Here.
Mayor Petfalski is not here. Alderperson Wolf is standing in.
Right, thanks.
And, can I just read this?
I was waiting for the beeping to stop. I don't know what was going on. Okay, so, statement of public notice? Oh, we have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
Yes, we have a quorum.
Statement of public notice?
The meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
There's no approval of agenda, approval of minutes from January 14th, 2020, July 14th, 2020, and July 28th, 2020.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business, Public Works and Development. We're just gonna do these one at a time, right? So we'll do the Plan Division, and you're gonna start on page 30 and 31?
Yeah, so, I'll handle it, no problem here. We have a big schedule, a lot of things that fall underneath me. Besides me, Ryan is here and Scott's here, so we can help answer any questions that you had. We're gonna go through planning, engineering, public works, water, sewer, conservation, and parks tonight, for everything for capital, all right? So, we're gonna start on page 30, we're gonna start with planning, okay? Are you ready?
Fire away.
All right, first side note, just to let you know, we did holiday lights, remember that? We did it for three years. We did it for the first year, and then last year, we pulled it, because we didn't have enough receptacles for any more lights, so that was pulled from the Capitol for this year, because we have no more receptacles for it. Just as a side note, if everyone's keeping track from what was there last year to this year, all right?
Okay, so the 21,000 as budgeted from this year, we're not using?
It was a 10,000, it was 10,000, I think, each year, 10,000, 10,000, 10,000. Remember, we switched the 10,000, I believe, to a finance, computer IT something, software.
Okay.
And that was sometime in the spring, okay? But just a side note, just to let everyone know what's going on. All right, first one for planning. We are looking at the City Hall entrance sign and refurbishing the sign off Moreland Road. So let's start with the refurbished sign. At the corner of, kinda right by the Gingerbread House, there's that blue sign that we always have. If you go and look at it, it's kind of peeling apart, and it needs to be refurbished. It's the only one that does need to be refurbished. The secondary thing, we've been getting a lot of requests that we have a sign when we come off of Pioneer, that shows where Police and City Hall is, but when we put the new entrances, some people are like, well, why don't you have a sign there? So we would get another sign there. Now, that third, that another sign off Pioneer will say, City Hall, Police, and Municipal Court. If you saw the sign out in front when that got replaced, it says all three items. So that's the first request, we're asking to refurbish the sign on Moreland by the Gingerbread House, and to put a new sign in by the City Hall. And it looked pretty much identical to the one that's out there.
And just so you know, the law requires now that Municipal Court be on a sign.
Yep. So are we approving these one at a time, as though we're giving a blessing?
One at a time.
Okay, that's what we started doing, right?
Or discussion, any discussion, yep?
I didn't quite catch what you said, as far as, there's one new sign then for Pioneer? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, the other sign is, for the entranceway, it exists now, just that they're like, we've getting a lot of requests, hey, why don't you have another sign at the secondary entrance?
For the other entrance.
It looked very similar, it'll have lights on it as well. It won't be an LED, it'll be lights showing up on it, so.
Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Well, this is consensus, right?
What's that?
It's just consensus.
Just a consensus, was it?
Yep.
Okay, why we raise our hands up? Is that what we started doing, or what did we do last time?
Straw pole, as we called it.
What's that?
We just kinda do like a straw pole, and you can raise your hand.
Favor.
Probably, all those in favor?
And over, yeah.
Okay, you're good.
That's why I just ask all of them favor, just do it that way, just be consistent, okay?
All right, moving on, page 31. The next planning thing that we have are banners. We have, our banners that we have up there are getting pretty well beaten up. So what we did is we counted, and we needed so many, like 30 on Moreland, 22 on Pioneer, Test Corners 24, and Janesville 70. So that cost to replace those banners is $8,000. So it's a pretty good deal for doing all those banners, but that's one of the things that, that just needs to be updated.
Questions, discussion? All those in favor? Consensus here?
Yep.
Is everybody, I didn't see everybody's hands.
It might be easier to say if anybody doesn't.
Bob, did you, are you in favor? Okay, I believe everybody's in favor, so we can move on. Okay, we're now moving on to engineering, that'll be on page 32. One couple things just to note in the description, because it started off as a long time ago, there is no off-trail, even though it says on there, there is no off-trail, and there will be no purchase of right-of-way. We kept everything within the right-of-way. I'd just like to let a footnote in the description, so that there's no confusion with anyone up there on it. We went through this, there's no off-trail, there's no purchasing of right-of-way. So, this would be the Hillendale Road reconstruction from Racine to College Avenue. It was supposed to be done, last year, we pushed it due to the cost. It is a $2.8 million project, letting you know. The road is used a lot by our school. We have about approximately 500 kids that go to that school, and now there are about 70 workers that, that are at the school. The road needs to be done, it can't be any more patching. At the same time, too, the ditching will be upgraded. If you look at the ditching right now, there is none in some cases, and we have some stormwater issues. You know, Alderperson Engelhardt knows some of the situations there. We need to have some of the ditches to hold the water, and let the water infiltrate back in there. From a safety standpoint, too, you gotta get some of those trees, and you gotta clear up the clear zone. When I say clear zone, car gets, like a deer, a person jumps out, you have time to recover. So, those are the other things. And the other thing to note, too, from a safety standard as well, if you ever drive the road and try to find fire hydrants, fire hydrants are along one side of the road, but you can't find them, because the brush is so thick, so, just... Any questions, discussion?
Price went up by about 8%?
Yep. We got 90% plans, asphalt, we make sure we cover everything. We base it off, we look at all the cost of everything that we're doing. It went from, I think, 2.4 to about 2.8, is that what I think I had?
2.6 to 2.8.
2.6 to 2.8, yep. Asphalt prices have gone up. Now, again, we're in a different world, where we put this bid out in December. Right now, I don't know how hungry contractors are gonna be. I don't know what's gonna happen with DOT, so a lot of things can change. But we project our costs, and we base them off of the most recent information and data that we have, so.
And could you talk a bit about the funding source for this?
The funding source, one is from landfills, and the other one is from other funding, borrow funds, so. I'm assuming you're talking the focus on energy stuff and some of the other stuff? So, yep.
Good, thank you.
Hey Scott, are these plans online to be viewed?
So, there, I just put on today, 90% plans online, and afterwards, we'll be talking in Public Works, and I'll mention that again. So, 90% plans are online right now. So, anyone can pull them up and look at them. I've talked to people, they can come in and talk to me. Now, from the 60% to 90% plans, you're not gonna see too much difference, it's just more detail work of it. Again, no trail, again, the same footprint out there, the width of the road hasn't increased. We're not adding new asphalt pavement to anything. The curb and gutter, very small, just kinda at the end where we connect into College Avenue. It's going to look pretty darns close to what it is right now, just new.
With nicer ditches.
What'd you say?
With nicer ditches, or clean.
Nicer.
Nicer, okay.
If you drive up through there, everything is hodgepodge all the way up through there. Nothing consistent on it, no.
No.
I think, perhaps it doesn't belong in the finance, but the, this budgeting, the area that's east of the, or just south of where Tans intersects there, the, that area I've always heard was supposed to be, what do we call it? Shielded, you know, with, with the trees and stuff there. It's always been talked that way, that they were promised that that would always be foliage or something on that side of the street. Have you ever?
I have not heard that yet. I mean, again, people come in and talk to me all the time.
I've heard that, I don't know where you would find anything of record that would say we had to, but knocking foliage back on that side, there's still supposed to be a berm or something there, always.
I can put a note and look at it, again, 90%?
But I don't think we're, I don't think we're affecting it deeply there, anyway, but, anyway.
Any other questions? Again, consensus, all those in favor? It looks like everybody's in favor. So, we can move on to the next one.
Next one, small SUV. So, we had this on, I think, three years ago, I had it, and then I had it for next, last year, but then we pushed it. This was to replace the Jeep Liberty. However, in this timeframe, too, the Ford Escape that IT uses has gone, pretty much gonna go away. So, this SUV will be shared by engineering, planning, and IT. And why we need an SUV big enough, so we can put the drone in the back for IT. So, this vehicle was once replaced the Jeep Liberty, and we've been able to make buy, but now that the Ford's escape is, is gone, we need one vehicle to be shared by all the divisions, so.
What kind of car did you say it was, I'm sorry?
Just a, a small SUV.
Just, okay.
Or mid-side SUV. It's gotta be able to get the drone, open up the back, slide the drone in, and so the IT can use it, so.
So you got estimates on this already, then?
What?
You have estimates on this?
Yeah, that's why I provided $40,000, so, yep. All these estimates, when we go talk to people, we go and reach out to our local dealership, I would have to say Lynch, and get some quotes, some things, so.
Okay, I was just checking, because I asked what kind it was, and I didn't know if he had something planned, just a small SUV, okay?
Tell us about the Jeep Liberty, you know, what, what's wrong with the?
Oh, that Liberty was gone three years ago, it broke, and we auctioned it off and sold that.
So that's been gone for?
Oh, that's been gone for like, three or four years, so.
What have you been using since then?
So, what we do is this, we have Dan's truck, which Dan is no longer here, so between myself and Aaron, when we go out, we go use that truck. If multiple people are using it, I also kinda use Ryan as my chauffeur around the place. I ask him to pick me up, and then we go do visits. Or sometimes, I use my own car, because then they don't know I'm coming, certain contractors, and I like to make surprise visits, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Consensus, all, all in favor, raise their hand. Looks like everybody rose their hand, so we can move forward.
Page 34, LED lights project. So, I hope you have all noticed, Janesville Road got all transformed LED lights, and the industrial park got LED lights, and that was done last year. This is kind of like our last big push for them. Moreland needs about 60 fixtures, Pioneer out here needs 24, and the Test Corners needs 24. This would be 60,000 hour cost to replace all of them, and then we fill in and we file a focus on energy for it, so. And I would have to say, after this one done, we're probably, what, 90% we replace the? Yep. All the road, all lights that we own and maintain, 90% of them will be LED.
Is the library run by you, or by the library?
Well, we would probably main, if they would ask us to flip them, we'd probably do it, but we got, like I said, about 90%, so we have about 10% left, that we can probably do it.
What's the rebate on these?
It all depends on what type of light we use, fixture. So, for example, if they give us a head, sometimes you get $20 a head, sometimes a $50 fixture, it all depends on which ones we use for it. So, what happens is, they have to submit the documentation. I filled out the form, I sent it in the Focus on Energy, and it works really well. We've done it for all buildings of Police, City Hall, and DPW. I did LED lights and HVAC for Focus on Energy, and Sharon, they worked out pretty good for all the Focus on Energy stuff that we've gotten back. So, it's kind of a nice little program that we do. It takes a little time, but I have a good contact over at Focus on Energy, and helps me through the process.
Good. As long as the paperwork's done right, it's pretty quick.
Yep, it is.
Have we, have we seen any change in the billing, then?
You know what, I have to probably ask when that, but I think you're probably not gonna see too much right now, because it's probably only been a month or two, but we can always check on that, so.
Now, that'd be interesting to see if this really, really made a good effect for us.
Well, you have the hidden effect, too, of maintenance, replacing the bulbs, buying new bulbs, and guys going up and down, changing them out, so hopefully it'll free up Ryan's group a little bit.
That'd be nice.
Okay, any questions, any more questions? Consensus, my hands, all those in favor? Again, it looks like everybody's hands up, so we can move forward to the next one.
Okay, we're gonna shift to Public Works. And Ryan's just here to help any questions or details and stuff like that. He knows ins and outs of all the stuff we're requesting. The first one is on page 35. We just asked for about 5,000 a year for miscellaneous and small equipment. We started this last year. We project out for the five years, because it's one of our costs that we just see from Capitol every time.
Questions, discussion? All those in favor, show them a hand?
Yep.
Again, looks like everybody's hands are up, looks like we move forward.
Next one, page 36. This is our pickup truck replacement for 2021. We're doing the one, a half-ton pickup with dump bed and plow. Again, we have them all projected out for the next five years, it's just the time for the half-tonner, so.
Questions?
What did we get last year? Didn't we get, or this year, I should say, wasn't the budget for this year? Didn't we get something?
There was no budget.
Last year's over to this year.
Okay.
Because of, before COVID hit, GM went on a strike, and then when they went back to work, COVID hit, so they focused on all, I guess you'd say, everyday trucks, and they put from 3,500 up off to the side, so we're just kinda rolling it in from last year.
I can remember, they all throw together after a while.
Any other questions? Show hands of who's in favor. Again, it looks like everybody's hands are up, so we can move forward.
Next one, page 37. We are looking at the roadside moor and tractor. It's time, is this the big tractor with the side that goes down and cuts along the big roads that we have? You'll see them driving down the road, once in a while.
Pretty much the same tractor? Any upgrades?
We're, we're gonna upgrade this one. Right now, it takes, because of the size of the equipment, it takes two full-time guys, year-round guys that also have CDLs. So from, we usually go out the week before Memorial Day, and we stop about the first week in October before we start leave collection, and this tractor would actually act as two, because we're gonna put a back moor and a side moor on it that can adjust in and out, so that will free up another guy with his CDL, instead of having two guys out there the whole time, for those four or five months, we'll have just one, with twice the moor. So, moving forward, is, I mean, I've been there for 20 years, it's always been two guys, and it's time that that moor that was purchased when I started, it's now time to get rid of it and move on. So I figured that we could utilize our guys a little more than tying up two of them. It's not something you really wanna put a tarp, a part-time employee on just because of the equipment and, you know, the risk that comes with running it, so.
The only other question I have on this is about, how long is, before you think you'd project?
It's like a 15, it's like a, kinda like the bucket truck was, it's about like a 15 to 20-year purchase. The current one that we'd be replacing is 2001, so.
Does the additional equipment on there, does that account for the increase? I know it was projected out to be 25,000 less.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions? Again, consensus, my hands, all in favor, raise their hand. Again, it looks like everybody raised their hand, so we can move on to the next one.
Next one, conveyor belt. We need a new conveyor belt to load salt into our salt shed. It's a very expensive piece of equipment. I'm just, we were kinda shocked with the cost, too.
Again, a $20,000 increase over projections.
Yeah. I think with this, because this isn't just for salt, it falls in the aggregate stacking area, so as production and construction has gone up, and the need to have, perfect example, like Amazon South, you'll see portable ready-mix pits, and they have all these stackers all over the place, so they're getting, bringing more, more of the materials right to the job site instead of hauling it in, and with that, it's been raising costs, just like with Hillendale and everything else. We currently use, to put in perspective, we used a grain auger just to, when we get the salt delivered, to utilize a full tonnage, the full circumference of the shed. The big one that you can see from Mercury holds 2,500 ton. I budget for about 3,300 ton a year. I always like to go into the next season with a full shed. To utilize that area, we have to stack it as high as we can. In the past, we would make ramps and get our equipment in there, but then you're exposing all your equipment to the salt. We saw breakdowns in our bearings, and, you know, salt gets in everywhere, places you never even see. So, we use the same auger for about 10 to 12 years. We have a couple farmers that work by us, we kept limping along, and it broke last year. We purchased a smaller one just to get me through the season, and these grain augers are not used for something that's coarse. I mean, salt comes so coarse, it smashes in all the metal, and as it gets augered up, it really takes a wear and tear on the augers. An auger can range anywhere between 25 to $40,000. What we do every year, after we, we take the salt at the end of the year, whatever I've left in my contract, and put it up that way and store it, after that, we flush the whole thing out with water, take a drum of drain oil, sawdust, run the sawdust, send it to coat the inside of the auger, do everything we can the next year, as soon as we start it up, rust chunks come flying out, and, you know, it just eats away and eats away. So this would not only help us with the salt and stacking, it would help us with our millions we get brought in, any dirt we need to move on site. It is a high cost, but for us to be efficient and effective, if I ever had to take salt that I couldn't fit in the shed, I would either have to pay so much a day down at Jones Island, or we would have to store it outside, and the tarpit, it is, I think it's $11.50 a ton, just to put a tarp over it. So, to put in perspective, we'd be spending thousands every year if I can't get up high enough in our shed.
How is the building?
The building was built in, if you've seen our projections, 2023, it looks kind of a hefty one, but our building itself is nice. We also utilized a smaller original one, but that one's also falling apart. So the building itself was built in 2000. We've just done some reinforcements, we put a roof on it in 19, and kinda went through the whole process. I also put a new overhead door on it. You know, it's just, salt is tough on everything, so.
How do these conveyors hold up, as far as the belting on them?
Uh, the belting, all sealed bearings. Obviously, the belting's all made of rubber, and the actual whole frame is aluminum. So everything is, Town or City of Brookfield has one, we went out, watched it work, well-constructed, they've had it for, I think, 12 years, and it still looks brand new, it's, looks in great shape. It's one of those things, as long as you take care of it, with how corrosive everything is, but this is, I don't even call this a 20-year purchase, this could be 20 to 30 years. It's just something that, unfortunately, is gonna sit around more than it's used, but it's something we need to stay efficient and utilize what we have right now.
Any other questions? Do you think maybe, you talked about the harshness of the salt, do you think maybe the maintenance, should there be a projection dollar amount out in the future on maintenance on this?
On the actual machine?
Well, the, the whole salt process, I don't know, whatever you wanna declare, what needs to be maintenance, is the building, the machinery, the whole thing, I don't, I don't?
As far as the trucks and the whole fleet, or?
Oh, no, just, just the holding of the salt and the equipment around it, moving it?
Yeah.
So that's something you might wanna take a look at, then?
We can. I mean, like, all the, the brackets that hold all the framing and the trusses that come down, those all get wire brushed every year, and we spray them with, it almost is, it's like a Carmex that sucks into the metal, and then last year, we did it again, and we sprayed bed liner, the Rhino liner, on everything to protect it, and it seems to be holding out more. Replace the door tracks, and, but yeah, that's something I can throw in there.
I'm just looking at, if it helps you out, maybe it'll help us out, too, so.
Sure.
Maybe it'll make the machinery last longer, too, I don't know. Any more questions? All those in favor, again, consensus hand? Looks like everybody's hands up, looks like we're good to go to the next one.
All right, page 39, we're on the last one for the Public Works. This is Boxhorn Storage. We are, when they move out, finally, the gun club, we will be taking over that storage, cold storage. We just need to make a couple improvements of the $100,000. Some of the flashing's coming off, some rough repairs, I think, we, we looked at it. Yep, a lot of the tin, as they're rotted, but that'll be for $100,000, that gives us a pretty good cold storage. Additional space that we will use, that'll allow us to keep more stuff inside, instead of keeping stuff outside, which we all know that makes things last longer, so.
Questions? Any questions? Were we, were we budgeted for $100,000? I don't?
I think I was budgeted for $75,000 last year, and then we looked at it more, and we kinda compared with getting some estimates, and then we bumped it up to $100,000.
I mean, it sounds like we can also put up a new pole barn for $100,000, I don't know. That's what it sounds like to me, am I wrong? I mean, I, I don't, I mean, it sounds like we're rebuilding the whole building for $100,000.
We're pretty, we pretty much are. I mean, the, the structure's gonna stay there, it's gonna be all new tin around, adding overhead doors for access. Right now, it's all set to the, towards a launch, so anything you have to get in and out of there, you have to pull everything out to get everything in. So it's adding a new overhead door, lighting, electrical upgrade. I walked Jared through it, the inspector, and it would be structural upgrades. The original floor in there is fine, it, it is, I mean, I don't see it's using $100,000, but it's more or less, anything structural gets expensive in a hurry. So, it was more of a projection than actual cost.
Ryan, how large is it, the building?
Forty by 65, I believe. It's got the dock that we would probably get rid of, when they, they would back in and unload their clay pigeons, and all the, the east side facing of the building, right now, is all supported by two-by-eights, about eight-foot deep, and that's something that we're gonna probably, we put in there, at worst-case scenario, if we had to lift the building and put concrete footings on part of it, that's why we kinda brought it up. Worst-case scenario with Boxhorn.
So we're gonna go out the bid on this, then? We'll, we'll see the bid figures, then?
Absolutely, yeah, yep.
Okay. Any more questions? Again, consensus, all those in favor, put their hands up. Again, it looks like everybody's hands up, so we can move to the next one.
All right, you're done. Scott's up.
Yeah, you're gonna come back.
We're now doing utilities, water, and sewer. So, just for some people who are, are doing the thing, when we do water and sewer, and we do items, we split the cost between them, 50%, many of them. So, just to let you know, when we go through this, and you'll see a cost, I also will tell you a page number for sewer, because if you're approving that cost for water, you're also proving the 50% cost for sewer, just to let you know. But we'll walk through this, and we're not gonna surprise anyone through this whole process. So, starting on page, where are we at here?
48.
48. Meters, meters, this is what we project out each year, 150,000. That's meters, some new buildings, replacement of meters. We meter, just for everyone to knowledge, when we do an apartment building, we meter every apartment in that building. It's not just one meter for the whole building, we individually do everyone. Right now, we're a little behind in replacing the meters, just because of COVID, but we hope to catch up.
Any questions? This is pretty much what they do every year on this one. So, all those, again, in favor? It looks like you got the consensus, so we can move to the next one.
Next one, page 41. Next one, page forty-nine, our well rehab program. So, uh, just kinda let you know a couple things here. In two thousand twenty, we asked you to approve two hundred thousand dollars to do well eleven and ten. So we got all the cost back and everything, can't do both. Um, we just don't have enough money. So all we're going to do is well eleven in two thousand twenty and then well ten, we're asking for the money in two thousand twenty-one. What we won't do is, and for the two hundred thousand dollars that we asked for in two thousand twenty, we won't use all that. We'll, we'll probably in the estimate about a hundred fifty thousand, not the two hundred thousand. We just can't do both, we, we don't have the money to do it. So that's why we're just separating them back and forth.
So there's that much of a difference, a hundred thousand dollars?
Um, we also had to replace, when we did, started going in there, it wasn't just the pumps, it was the piping, all involving with the pumps. And that added a lot more additional cost to it when you start looking at it. The other side note, two thousand twenty-four, well number seven. So that had a failure on what, yesterday?
Friday.
Friday. Um, pretty much completely done, is that the best way to put it? So. It shot, the pump is shot. So we'll be removing that from this list for next year because we're gonna have to do pretty much an emergency fix to kinda get that done and up and going, so. Side note, that this just happened, so.
So we have to approve that?
No, I'm just.
You're gonna, you're gonna just do it, right?
Well, we're, this needs to be done, this is, you know, but it's a side note to let everyone know why it probably will be taken off, so.
Now, does this Scott, uh, cost Scott include cleaning and inspecting? Cause I know there was a separate budget for that last year.
Uh, we, we're having our water towers inspected this year, that was in this year's budget.
Okay.
These wells we take down one at a time every ten to fifteen years.
Okay.
Full pump, inspect them, replacement needed, have some treatment done to the, the wells themselves, screenings.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Does that include any, uh, any other devices in there? What are you, I mean?
Nothing new.
Drives and things like that?
Uh, the BFDs we usually, the, the drives we will replace separately.
Okay.
They usually fail in less than ten or fifteen years, so they.
Well, I know we just did some, that's why I was asking, I don't know what pumps they were on or what, so.
They get replaced and repaired as necessary, they usually last five to seven years.
Any other questions? Again, consensus, all those in favor, raise your hand. It looks like everybody did, so we go to the next one.
Yep. So we're moving on page fifty. So this is one that's shared and I, I will let everyone know. It's page fifty of water and page sixty-two of sewer utility. So when I say that it's shared, okay, I wanna make sure it's clear. Asphalt payment seventy-five, gutters fifteen. It would also be shared, so sewer would be asphalt payment of seventy-five, gutters of fifteen, for, for the total project about one, one eight, a hundred eighty thousand dollars. So. Just to let you know on this one, we did do asphalt payment around our new buildings, but.
There is no page sixty-two.
Again, you probably have in the old one, it, it's gonna be the exact same.
Okay.
It's probably in the summary sheet that you have, but I wanna make sure that you understand that if you do prove this one for water, you also kinda have to prove the one for sewer. Just, side note, just so that no one gets confused. Okay, on page, yeah, four. Sewer utilities, you can kinda see the, the breakdown.
Oh, I got it in this one here.
Yep, you can kinda see when you get to it, it's like all of a sudden it says Apollo Building Payment and Gutters, page fifty, and then you go down sewer utility, page sixty-two, and you can see the exact numbers are in both of them on page four.
It is on page sixty-two, it's in the original.
In the original.
In the original big one, correct. And that's what I'm just, I'm, I'm just.
Yep.
Trying to be, you know, share all that information.
Yeah, I usually, we, we do that all the time like that every year, so.
Yep.
Nothing, nothing different again.
Trying to be a little bit more efficient.
And these costs are all borne by the user, so.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Any other questions? Consensus, all those in favor, raise your hand. And it looks like, uh, we're in consensus, so we go to the next one.
Next one, page fifty-one. Uh, this is another shared cost. So this is a one-time cost. Um, some of you know, Alderman Kabaki asked me about this, about what, a month ago, we had an accident. Um, uh, near what, Mesquitego Dam Road?
Dam Road.
Yep, um, a truck, um, gentleman fell asleep pretty much at the wheel, uh, truck got totaled. Um, everyone was okay, but that truck has been destroyed. Um, so we need, uh, to ask for a one-time replacement for a truck. Again, this is twenty-seven thousand five hundred for water, twenty-seven thousand five hundred for, um, sewer.
And insurance is covering some of that?
Insurance did cover some of that, I believe.
About ninety thousand, it's an older truck. And then we took the actual dump box off and sold that for another three.
Yeah.
So is that money over and above the twenty-seven thousand, did we get the truck, or?
No, that's going back into, you have an unassumed utilities and then we.
Okay, yep.
Wanna be transparent on that. Any other questions? Again, consensus, all those in favor, raise your hand. And it looks like we got them all up again, so you're ready to go.
Uh, page fifty-two, this is our standard, um, how we split the pickup trucks. Um, so in two thousand twenty-one, uh, again, this is one that we split between water and sewer. Uh, we're looking to do a forty thousand dollar total, split between water, which would be twenty thousand and sewer would be twenty thousand. And we project all our costs all the way out. And one question, I know Scott knows this, in two thousand twenty-four, why aren't we doing one again and there is a reason why?
We're doing something, uh, no trucks are coming up that year.
Yeah. We got a bigger cost for an item.
Yeah.
No, we just did the camera.
The camera truck.
Yeah. It's a, the sewer.
Vactor.
Vactor trucks.
The sewer cleaning truck, so it won't be split, that's something that's just in the sewer side.
And then what we do is, when we have a bigger cost like that, we just don't ask for a truck that year. So that's why you see why there's not one there, so.
Okay.
Not that we missed it, but just kinda like our projection of how we do it.
And it's just a regular pickup truck?
Yep.
Any questions? Again, show consensus by hands. And it looks like everybody's there, so we can move on.
Okay, page sixty, uh, now we're getting just into the back, we're back just to the sewer, just sewer utility. Um, two thousand twenty-one, our Kurtz lift station renovation, we need about fifty thousand, um, for some of our renovation for that lift station. What, uh?
That one, uh, the last ten years or so, we've been, we've got a lot of lift stations with the controls underground. We've been trying to move them all above ground, keep them out of confined spaces. And this is just continuation of that, trying to move the controls. This one needs a new generator also.
So the, it, it looks like twenty, it looks like the prices are going up, so are you, you putting generators? I mean, I don't know what the difference in the cost is.
Some of the lift stations don't have generators. Uh, we use portables, had a, quite a number of them, we just take and plug them in wherever the power's out. Some of these stations have generators assigned to them and this one does and it's nineteen eighty-four vintage.
So I'm guessing that's like ten thousand dollars difference?
Probably.
Just from looking at two thousand twenty-three to now? I, I, I don't know, it looks like, you know, you guys are bouncing around in numbers, so I was just trying to get a feel for, for cost.
And two thousand twenty-four is McShane, that's a.
That's a big one.
Yeah, that's the big lift station that pumps pretty much the whole city to Milwaukee.
Any other questions? Again, show of consensus, raise your hands, all in favor? There you go, you can move on.
Next one is our page sixty-one, this is our private I and I stuff, um, this is what we do every year. It, our biggest struggle, what we are trying to do is find things to spend it on. Um, our, our system's very new compared to like Milwaukee or other places. So we kick into this MMSD, the I and I fund and we are, we are trying to be creative and, and beginning to figure out ways to spend this money, that's what we have out there.
What are the limitations on, on where you can spend this?
Well, the biggest problem with this is right now is this. You figure a lot of I and I stuff is you replace, instead of replacing laterals, they want you to line a lateral. So that is kinda like one contractor that can do it. Well, we don't have a lot of, of those situations where we have clay pipe or we have lead pipe, or we, we need to do the lining. The other situation that they're having with MMSD is their process, which they've been doing for the last so many years, has not been working well and it's failing. And they're videotaping all them that they've done in a lot of communities and that liner's coming across, is coming away from it and they're getting more I and I back into it. So the one major method that almost all communities use is I and I, which was lining the little pipes, has been failing and failing pretty bad. We have done one in our whole community, some have done probably close to five thousand or more. And usually the other problem that works with this is they do a cost sharing. So for example, I would go to Mr. Kabaki's, uh, house and I would say, okay, we need to reline your house. We want you to pay a third of it, we'll cover two-thirds of that cost. Well, first of all, you're like, well, it's underneath the ground, why would I wanna do this? Who do I care about I and I? So first, we gotta educate you. Second of all, we have to have contractors and you have to sign off on this back and forth. It's kind of a real issue where, instead of what happens is you have ten people there trying to do it and you only get five people or less to sign up in. And we've, we checked this out with every community. This is one of the things that we've been looking at for three years. We even went down to MMSD and talked to Kevin Schaefer about this. One of our suggestions that we would do is that, and we're sitting on like one point six million dollars right now and is to look around, for example, Little Mesquitego Lake and look around some of the things where we have really old laterals and we would pay for everything. Homeowners are gonna be more welcome if we replace the whole entire lateral and take care of it all with these funds rather than do any cost sharing. Because it just doesn't work. You'll get of a role where if five bad ones will get two replaced, well, the other three are terrible, so what's the point of it? So these are some of the solutions that we're trying to think outside the box. And we're also the believer too is if we know lateral's bad, just replace it, solve the problem. I mean, not try to, you know, keep trying to do a lining thing that does not work, so.
So you can't replace?
We had to go down to MMSD to ask permission about a year and a half ago.
The, the district is reluctant to let you do that because they feel lining is more cost effective.
Okay.
Finding out now is not.
Yeah.
So our thought is to start with the oldest sewers in the city, most of your runs around the lake are most likely gonna be in groundwater.
Mm-hmm.
Just replace them.
Good.
Plus, we can say, the other thing too is what we figured too is we have twenty homes, put out a bid to a contractor, you're doing all twenty. You know, you're, you're doing, you know, we're trying to figure out best ways to write these contracts and, and do all at once. Get a company in, get it in, get it done, assume all the costs, all the restoration. It's the only way homeowners are gonna do it. It, it, homeowners are like, it doesn't matter to me, it's in the ground, I don't care, I flushed my toilet. I don't care about I and I.
Sure.
I, I'm being, I, I mean, I, I, I like to be totally practical and honest with you guys cause we've walked and we've talked to so many other communities and we, and it, it just does not work, so.
They don't get very good participation when they ask for, the homeowner participates, cost lies. Just tell them we're doing it for free.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
And we're able as a community to kinda do that, cause we have very new systems. If, if you're in other communities where they have, almost everything's just aging, i- i- it's very hard.
If we do do that kinda work at no cost to the homeowner, does that include the restoration of those properties?
Yes.
Oh, it does?
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you.
We need to start spending this money, the district charges us for it, puts it in a segregated fund, just rush. If we don't start using it pretty soon.
Good.
Any other questions? Again, show of hands for consensus. There you go. Can move on to the next one.
All right, we're done with utilities. I got one conservation and then we're going to parks. Thanks, Scott. Uh, page sixty-six, conservation, uh, Luther Park Cemetery. Uh, I don't know if anyone's been out there. Uh, the cedar wood fence around there is basically weathered and falling apart. Um, what we would like to do is replace it with a commercial grade black aluminum fence that would mimic a wrought iron. Um, and I think it'd be a perfect time to kinda just, uh, take care of this now, cause you can tell, you go out there, you can easily see the post and are beginning to fall over, so.
Any questions? All those in favor, or consensus, raise your hand. And again, everybody's hands are up, so we can move on.
Okay, last one, parks. Back page sixty-eight. Okay, I'm gonna give you an overview, highlight before we start going for individual one, because there's a lot of things just to, to let you know. So just, if we just start talking, again, the, the biggest thing I think we need to see is gonna be the baseball fields, one, two and three for, um, Park Arthur. Um, and we can put this one at the, at the end and the Park Arthur field, one, two and three alternatives. We can put that one at the end, cause that's gonna probably be the biggest discussion. But if you're looking down, I just look at Horn, Jensen, Kurth, De Noon, Bloom. Um, what those are, is our field safety improvement programs. Every year and it's kinda projected out for each year, is that's for us to get the fields ready. So once we get the fields ready, we can turn them over to any baseball team to do it. That's our cost every year to do it, that's just to make sure the, the fields are safe every year. This is just a standard cost that we have and it's projected out for the last five years that we do. So I guess my, my first thing is if you guys wanna look at just those things of Horn, Jensen, Kurth, De Noon and Bloom, just for two thousand twenty-one. And that's our standard one, it ranges anywhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars each year, so.
Good.
Why we don't have anything for rugby, soccer and football in two thousand twenty-one. Remember, we're doing that MMSD green infrastructure right now. Um, where we're doing the soil amendments and I don't know if you've seen any of that, but, uh, we kinda did, which ones? Um, Sand Hill already, Bloom and Kurth, is that right? Sand Hill, Bloom and Moreland. If you, so if you were out there and you're seeing what they're doing, that's our soil amendments, we punch holes, we applied, um, seeding and we just did a top coat. So we're hoping, by what we did there, we don't have to touch rugby field, soccer field and football fields for next year. That's why you don't have any cost for that, so.
Any questions? Again, show of hands for consensus. There we go, looks like you got them all again.
Okay, I will now go down to the, the bottom areas. Um, the miscellaneous playground replacement equipment, that's five thousand, the wood chips, ten thousand. Those are just standard costs that we have every year. The Manchester one, that is the one that I believe Ally came to you, um, last time and she talked about her raising the funds, this is the forty thousand dollars. Um, I think from the last I heard, she's up to fifteen thousand, I think, raised? Something like that from a, a GoFundMe page. Um, this would be our portion of, of that to, um, to match that, so.
And just to be clear, it is a match?
It's, it's a match. They would put forty thousand, we would put forty thousand.
And if they?
But if they only raised twenty, we still pay the forty, right?
Well, no, it's eighty thousand total roughly.
So is it a match, a match? If they only raised twenty, how much does the city pay? Twenty or forty?
Oh, we got the forty, you mean would they pay sixty?
Right.
I, I, I remember.
What was the answer then? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Well, let, let's, let's back up one step, the total would be eighty thousand.
The total would be eighty thousand for the playground. Okay. The playground that she chose and the work that needs to be done, that's how we came up with that number. We worked and we chose a playground that we thought with everything through it. Now, again, I can leave that up to you guys to do it. Let's say she only raises twenty and we wanna match twenty, we could choose maybe a smaller playground or, or something that we can look at to, to doing. You guys can say, hey, we only approved that amount for up to match, I'm, I'm not gonna be against you to do it, it's up to you to do it.
Well, that was my impression, that was, it was truly a match, that if they raised forty, we would, add you up forty, if they raised twenty, we'd add you up twenty.
And why I had to put forty thousand in there, that was, we had to give you something, you know, and we, so we had to choose a footprint and we had to choose what type of playground that we're gonna do and get you the cost for that. So that's how we came up with that number, so.
I, I think the original discussion, when we talked about it on the, um, the, the other side was, I think the numbers came out to be a match, it was more of a, uh, raise the funds to purchase the equipment, we'll cover the installation. I think they lined up perfectly, so we called it a match as opposed to it actually being a dollar for dollar match. Uh, I'm not saying that that's the way we have to go, but the original discussion was we would cover the installation, you cover the equipment and they just so happened to be an identical dollar for. an identical dollar figure. So.
Well, that, and I think that's because of the type of equipment. And equipment's not cheap, so 40,000, if we went and did it ourselves for 40,000.
Well, the equipment's very expensive and we went through a park tour with Scott and, um, and, you know, I, I understand that. But my question is, is if we, i- i- if it costs 80,000 to purchase and install this piece of equipment and we've got 40,000 budgeted and they raise 20,000, we're still short. So my, 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 what I would like to see us do is create truly a match situation. And if it's not possible in 2021, then we move it off to 2022. Um, why do things halfway?
No, you're right. You're right. I mean, the only alternate you can do is we could still stay with the 40 and if they come with 20, then we have to do a $60,000 playground. But they're not going to get what they're looking for. So I think, I think to you, in my opinion, I think I'm on your page to hold it off another year and, and do it properly.
I mean, I don't mind pledging the 40 if there's another 40 that's going to be arranged, arranged for the proper piece of equipment that's needed for that part.
Right, but the other, the other catch to that that I, I would question is that we were going to put a playground in there anyway, right? I mean, that was part of our deal to put something in there. So, um, if it doesn't end up moving into 2021, it doesn't, and, and if we take an extra year and it doesn't work and we end up with 60,000, maybe we should have another discussion on what we want to do at that point. So that if we want to stay with the 40 and there are 20 and then put a $60,000 unit in rather than delaying it another year again. I think, I think we can, you know?
Another discussion.
Just have another discussion.
Yeah.
Right? Get all on the same page again. I mean, until, until we know dollar amounts, we don't know where we're at.
A lot of what ifs.
Right?
Yeah.
So, so how do we want to word this?
I mean.
Sure, and we'll, and we'll, we'll, we'll under the 40 pending a match. Right?
Again, is it truly a match? That's, that's my question. Is it, we, we put match down here, but I'm not hearing match. Yeah.
See, I, I think if we approve the 40 here now, we can roll that next year and at least the money's there in the thing and we can have a discussion further on how and what and why and when. Right? I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it's already in our budget. Do we want to just, we want to leave it in there? That's my point.
And we didn't, I mean, it wasn't pitched as a match. I know that we're talking like verbiage here. It was pitched, they're going to buy the.
It was clearly pitched as a match.
No, it was pitched as, as we do the install, they will purchase the equipment. It just so happened to be a dollar for dollar. We can go back and look at it, but it, it wasn't, you raise 10, we'll give 10, you raise 20, we'll give 20. It was, hey, we'll donate the cost of the equipment if you'll cover the cost of the installation. And again, it, it, it works out to be a match, assuming all things are equal.
Does, does that sound right, Scott?
Yeah, I, no matter what, guys, you could just make a caveat, have me come back before we install anything. I, I, I have no problems doing that.
Still collecting, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still here, you know? I mean, don't get me wrong. We, like, I will come back, just put a note and say, before anything's done, Scott, come back, present. I'll say, here she goes, here's the 40,000, here's our, our, our 40,000. If, if, if she doesn't reach it, and there's nothing wrong where you guys approve stuff, if they don't reach it, we don't spend it. I mean, it's, it's not unheard of to do.
Do you know what the timeframe is for that?
Well, I'm hoping she's doing it pretty quick because the idea would be nice to kind of get, we like to order stuff and like, start thinking about January 1st, February 1st. Because as soon as I get approval, I want to be the first one to get equipment purchased. And sometimes they do deals of saying, hey, we had this type in our shop. We want to get rid of it. Another community backed out. What deal can you work with us? So we kind of start putting our feelers out in November, December with, um, Minnesota playground equipment. And once we start pulling our feelers out, then we're ready to go. Because once January goes, I like to get that purchase so that we can get insulation as soon as we can in the spring. So, um, she's pretty much got now to about January 1st to, to raise it. Because I can't, I can't make any purchases until the new year anyways. So.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so in, so in theory, we, we can have, let us go through with more discussion. Right? I mean, is that good?
Quick update, 20, 21,000 raised as of right now.
See, yeah, see, it, it's, it's coming. So.
Okay.
So we got 20 ready, which is good.
All right, good. We're half rolled. All right, thanks.
Okay, so we all on the same page on this? Everybody can say, raise their hand?
Okay.
I mean, it looks like everybody's hands went up. There we go.
Okay, here's the last one. This is the one that everyone, I throw it at the end. It's, it's the Park Arthur playground, uh, the fields, one, two and three. Um, I also threw in there an alternative for turf. Not that you want it, I just threw it in there. Maybe the groups want to raise it. I just, I'm not asking, I'm just trying to give you guys in a cost, what it would cost to, to turf it. To give you an idea, um, I know we passed on the Park Arthur four one, but I just want to give you an idea because we did get bids. So I think we put it out for 315. Our lowest bid came back at 311. So.
After.
After, after.
After it was restructured and.
After we restructured and we offered the services. So this cost is 650. Feel pretty darn confident that it will cost this amount of money. I'm just, I want to make sure that everyone knows here that I'm not trying to throw a number out that I think is ridiculously high. Um, this would be fields one, two and three. Um, Alden Kabaki, he did do the parks tour. He knows which ones that we're talking about there.
And so I have a question for you. Um, so the turf is an extra 100 on top of the 650?
Oh, yeah.
Estimate, I, yeah, I'm, I'm a field guy. Um, did you actually price those out too or no? Is that just kind of the ballpark? Okay. I didn't even know that was on the table, just to, yeah, I mean, it's a.
Yeah, I, I started reaching out to some companies. I, I see it probably being more than that. Um, that was just thrown on as an alternative and there's certain situations that it can kind of be like an à la carte with those three baseball fields. I mean, ages eight through, um, 12, uh, boys and girls. And that would be, not that it's a set it and forget it, but the maintenance cost, the wear and tear of the fields. If any of you guys have been up at The Rock, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of games within months and, you know, holding up and being able to stick more money into the fields by bringing in outside organizations to use them as soon, as long as our organizations are taking care of. That's something we've been running into this year with Milwaukee County shutting down. Um, you know, I've gone through triple the amount of consumables, garbage bags, toilet paper, soap, everything. Um, and Tammy can back up as far as every weekend, those games have been, or fields have been used. And it, it would be a good asset. It'd be a nice for the park. Now, the money obviously is quite high. But until I know and get something back from the turf companies that I've reached out to, we could be talking another 200.
Yeah. Have you looked at both, just doing the infield or the full field or is that?
It would be, the idea would be just turf infield. So have areas all the way in and then still have grass outfield. So the maintenance will be there for the cutting of the grass, but, um, you know, nobody, if anybody's been on turf, football, baseball, nobody wants to be standing on it any longer. You have to be especially in the outfield on a 90 degree day. So.
That's what Kenosha, a lot of their schools have done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how long does it typically last then?
Uh, in Wisconsin, you'll see, um, anywhere from, depending on installation, anywhere from 12 to 20 years. And when, you know, you're looking at redoing it, the infrastructure portion of it, all the work, the high cost is done. It's more or less just the relane of the actual product. So if we were to say, get a price for $850,000 to do all three fields, you're not going to pay that in three years again. You know, pay less than half of that. If you, you would even need to do it. And again, these, the age groups for this, it's not like repairing a football field. The age groups that use these, you're not talking about 200 to 300 pound people cutting and diving and going all over. You're talking about smaller kids and, um, the footprint on it, I guess you could say, would be considerably less. Football fields in Wisconsin have lost 10 or lasted about 10 to 15 years. And that's a lot of wear and tear, not just football, soccer, multi-use. So banned.
And these are just infields?
Just, just the infields, but again, the original plan to, to redo the fields is because of the drainage. Just, that was the main kind of goal. The, the turf was just something that, we always look at all alternatives. We just want to pass on stuff. Um, again, you know, we have great organizations here. Sometimes they do a lot of fundraising, sometimes they look at doing stuff. Um, the Warriors have always done stuff and added at Kirth. If we're going to look at this stuff, we, we look at it, you know? That's, that's just.
If you sort it out there, I'm not going to speak for those organizations, maybe a little bit. I've worked with some of them. If you told them, hey, for an extra hundred thousand dollars, we can put turf in all these infields, eyes would light up and they would probably jump on board. So.
Sure.
So.
I think it's a good showing on our part to put 650 into draining those fields.
But you, you don't want to go to 850?
No.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
This soon as.
I mean, if, if we told them turf, they might even cover some of the 650. I mean, again, I'm throwing it out there. It was a joint project and we said they will put.
I think 100 for turf is a little conservative.
Well, yeah, yeah, correct, but again, if we're talking three fields.
Yeah.
But, uh.
This is something also, now that you're up. This is also something that as I narrow down some more of the cost. I mean, Scott and I just kind of talked about this in the 11th hour when he was throwing everything together to get it on. But as I, you know, narrow down the cost a little bit, this is something else we can bring up again and say, hey, you know, this is where we're at and here's your opportunity to jump in.
Well, should we, um, hold this part off and have them come back? Just on this piece?
I think we can approve the 650 for, I mean, I could, I, we can certainly entertain.
Right, but we need an update on the rest and then if you want to contact, uh, the organizations, you know?
That could be an alternative.
Yeah, we could do an alternative.
Yes, when we do bids, when we do bids out there and everything like that, we always throw a bunch of alternatives on. And the reason why is this, I don't want to rebid things, so we always have alternatives. So we can always just throw alternatives on there like, what would it cost to turf the infields? You know, we, we do this all the time. And, you know, we, when we, when we did four, we had like a ton of alternatives. We didn't choose a darn thing. If, if, we weren't going to do it, we just, we have a wish list. How much is, you know, I mean, one, it allows us to figure out what costs are. Uh, it's a good like smell test for us, like, hey, are we in the ballpark for this cost? Two, sometimes, wow, that was cheaper and we can still afford it in capital. Or three, uh, we can't afford it, we're not going to do it at all. And, and that's what happens, but we don't want to rebid things three times because it costs a lot of money to put the ad out, to do all this stuff, to publicly bid it. So we have a lot of alternatives in our bids. Um.
Well, I, I think for budget purposes, I, I think that, you know, we can certainly entertain the 650, but that the opportunity for turf fields can certainly be presented to those people that are using them.
Right, right. And definitely given the opportunity to, to hear it and, and react to it. But I think we've already committed to these fields somewhat. Um, you know, maybe not to the dollar amounts 100% we want to hear, but I think we've committed to these fields that going with the 650 is, is, is fine and, and, uh, seeing what the clubs want to do with, uh, with turf or not.
Yeah.
Is there any thought to foot dragging on it long enough to see how much more people would get behind it?
Well, I, how, how much dire straits are these?
I don't know, but I mean, we're like stuck on, push everything back a year basically if you do them.
I mean, this discussion started three years ago.
Yeah.
And they've been Band-Aid fixes. We, we, we knew the problem right away. And as you can kind of see, costs and everything keep on rising. I don't want to say, well, let's just go spend the money because it might go up. Well, it might go down, but this is something for the, the use that they get. It is our only park that's lit, um, that can play double headers and into the night. And it, it's a great spot. It's got, you know, the flushing toilets, the year round, the sliding hill and everything else. And I just think, um, if we're going to do it, we should do it and commit to it. Okay, thank you.
You also look at the next five years. I tried to space out, I mean, the killer is this one. I mean, if you look at the next five years and this is true, it's like 2022, we're only spending about $240,000 in the park. 335 in 2023, 2024, 315 in 2025. The, the, the number is so big, it's going to skew whatever year you push. I, I'm just trying to, I, I tried to throw everything away as I could and just get the one item on there. But if, if you push it next year, you're just going to skew that, skew that year. I mean, there's nothing, that one item is so high compared to everything else we do for the parks.
Well, we, we also have the veterans playground set, which we've talked about too, and that'll be coming up.
Yeah, and that's.
That's a big, big number as well.
Yeah, it's a $300,000 cost in 2023. But of the $300,000 cost, I moved everything else around. The only other item that we have is 35,000. I'm, I'm trying to do the best. I think Alden Kabaki asked me last year to, how to space it out as best I could. And this is the best, whatever year you put that thing is, it's just going to skew that number.
What, what do we have, Sharon, in parking dedication?
Uh huh. Right. He was supposed to come back with an update on that, so I don't know where that's at.
Oh, are you looking for the parking dedication when you get subdivisions and stuff like that?
Yeah, what, what do we have? I mean, this is supposed to come out of the parking dedication fund. What do we have in the parking dedication fund? Okay.
What makes it easy?
Right.
I just got a request to give Sharon a microphone because nobody can hear.
Oh.
That's probably a good idea.
Yes, we're, we're checking and, you know, what we're also looking at, and I believe Jeff's intern is looking into this too. We get funds for subdividers for when you do subdivisions and some of that. Well, we have a considerable amount of money in that thing and we're trying to figure out the best way to use it or where we can use it. There is always, you know, you put things in funds, but of the legal standpoint, going through, where can we use these funds? And so we're trying to use, um, Jeff's intern to kind of do some research and see if we can use those funds and tap into that resource. So we're looking at, we're looking at places of, and I'm not trying to just ask for money. I'm trying to look at some of the other places that we can use our resources that we get for that. So.
Well, I think we have to move forward and take care of this field. We've been putting this off long enough. So I'm all in favor of the 650. I think we also need to consider this turf because I remember what happened when the high school started looking for money to put a turf football field in. There were people coming out of the woodwork, throwing money at them to do this. I, I don't think it's going to hurt for us to put that hundred thousand dollars in there. If, you know, if it doesn't work out, it won't be the first time that we backed it off. But I, I think it would be a great place, sir, and we should consider doing it.
Well, I'd like to see us go ahead with the, uh, with the field work, but hold off on the 100,000 until we know the interests of those groups. I mean, why put it in a budget if we don't need it?
It's kind of hard to come back with after the fact. It's easier to put it there and take it out than it is to not put it in and find it later.
Well, like I said, we could, we could also hold this off and have them come back at, at the end of our meetings. Right, so we're going to see this all again, but.
Yeah, you're going to see it again. I can put an alternative bid in there.
But I, but, but I'm still on, on Kevin's side. I'd like to hold off on it and see the interest before we commit to any money to know that something, something's coming in. Because, uh, I mean, we worked well together before putting the park together and it's a nice park. It's just that this is a nice surprise of extra money on a new park so soon, in, in my opinion. Uh, not that I don't want to take anything away from the park, but, um, let's, let's find interest. Kind of like the playset, uh, with the matching fund. So.
You've got to think about how much money that park would bring in with a turf field too. I mean, that's, that's all, it's all.
Right, right. No, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
I, is there a consensus on, on how people want to move forward? Anybody have an opinion how we should do this? I mean, do we want to go 650 or we want to go 750? As, I mean, that's, that's the question right now.
Well, can't we separate them and just talk about the 650 first and then discuss the 100,000 separately?
Sure. Is that good? Okay, so let's do that right now. Let's, let's all take a consensus by, uh, show our hands in favor of 650. Are you in that, on that one?
Reluctant on that.
What's that? What's that?
I'm reluctant on that, I'll let you guys...
Okay, so John is out on that one, but you still have the consensus on the six fifty. I mean, I don't think anybody wants to spend the six fifty, to tell you the truth. But, but it's a, it's a fact of life. So, John was out on that, but it still moves us forward to the next discussion, which would be the extra money for turf, which Ryan is saying could be as much as two hundred thousand. So, if you say a hundred thousand, I'm just throwing that out there just because everything I heard.
I can tell you they raised six hundred thousand for the high school.
Okay, let's do it.
So, I just, I know there's that much interest out there.
No, I know, I, I think I forgot over here too.
Yeah, you're probably on, on, online.
So, what is comments on the extra turf?
I'd say we wait till we see what kind of reaction we get from those user groups. I mean, why stick it in there if we don't need it?
Anything down this way?
Would you guys be okay if I still put that as an alternative bid?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I, I mean, just, not that we accept it, but...
It's separate already, so...
Yeah, it's, oh, it's just a separate, like, if we would, even if you didn't do that money?
And then if the groups know, if they're interested, they know what...
Yeah, they have a goal. So, it's not a big deal, it's just...
I just want to make sure that you, like, because, I don't want to be like, well, why did you put that in an alternative bid? Well, because, you know, but if you're okay with that no matter what, too, so, even if you don't approve it, so.
We say yes now, but over the next couple of months, we could change our minds, but we're not likely to.
Well, not necessarily. I think there's some concerns about the extra money right now. I mean, there's concerns about the six fifty, John. I mean, really, you know?
We may be concerned enough to alter it, but how many times have we in the past?
That's the problem with putting in the budget.
I mean, my thought would be, I, I probably wouldn't vote for it if it wasn't funded by community. So, could you put in a alternative source, anonymous donations for the hundred thousand?